Call the meeting to order for the legislative session 2018-08 for April 17, 2018. Those who would like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and thy will be done on earth as it is now. Give us this day our daily bread, and give us such trespasses as we give those who trespass against us. And these are not divotations, but deliverings to you, and by his human power and glory forevermore. For it is specified, of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertain a motion from council to approve the legislative amendments from April 3, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from March 20, 2018, in reference to proposed charter amendments.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any changes, corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from March 20, in reference to the Clean Energy Loan Program.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from March 20, in reference to public safety pits of elementary and middle school.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion second. Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from March 20, in reference to the lease amendments with Wycomico County Regional Airport.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from March 20, in reference to the Warwick contingency funding request.
So moved.
Second. Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from March 20, 2018, in reference to Tri-County Council contingency funding request.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. At this time, we have a very special time for us. It's the county council's opportunity to recognize some of our greatest teachers and some of our greatest leaders in Wycomico County. If you could please, we have Vice President Larry Dodd is going to read the proclamations for Marianne Nolte, Kate White, Keisha Cook, and Lisa Nicholson-McKinnon. And if you would like to, come to the podium now. Can you tell, teachers like order. Go ahead and stand up there with Vice President Dodd.
It gives me great pleasure to stand up here and read these proclamations to these fine individuals, these great assets to Wycomico County and our education system. I don't know if I'm gonna read every single one of them word for word, but there are certain parts that I can read that pertain to the individuals. I'll start with Ms. Keisha Cook. 2018, 2019 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year finalist. Whereas teachers fill many roles in the lives of the children they teach, and whereas long after our school days are memories, teachers continue to influence us. And whereas Ms. Keisha Cook, a middle school mathematics teacher at Choices Academy, was chosen amongst many outstanding educators to represent Choices Academy as a 2018, 2019 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year semifinalist. And whereas each year for teachers, one of them, each school level, are selected as finalists for Wycomico County Teacher of the Year Award. And whereas Ms. Keisha Cook joins a distinguished group of Wycomico County educators who have been recognized for demonstrating outstanding leadership, dedication to the education of our children, and professional achievement. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council recognizes and acknowledges Ms. Keisha Cook as a 2018, 2019 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year finalist, done this 17th day of April 2018, and signed by all county council members, and I apologize. Somebody probably doing it on purpose. Ms. Keisha Cook. Okay, next one, Ms. Kate White. Ms. Kate White is a 5th grade teacher at Fruitland Intermediate School, was chosen amongst many outstanding educators to represent Fruitland Intermediate School as a 2018, 2019 Wycomico Teacher of the Year semifinalist. And again, signed by all members of the Wycomico County Council. Ms. Marianne Nolte, a physical education teacher at Westside Primary School, was chosen amongst many outstanding educators to represent Westside Primary School as a 2018, 2019 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year semifinalist. And now this next young lady, Ms. Lisa McKinnon. I think I know her because, have you taught my daughter?
I haven't taught your daughter, I coached your daughter.
But you coached my daughter for several years now. And my daughter happened to be one of the students, the first student that got up and said something nice about you the other day. So that was special. So it is with great pleasure that the Wycomico County Council, excuse me, recognizes Lisa Nicholson-McKinnon, 2018, 2019 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year. Whereas teachers fill many roles in the lives of the children they teach, and long after the school days are only memories, teachers continue to influence us. And whereas Ms. Nicholson-McKinnon has taught mathematics at Parkside High School since 2006, and recently became an instructor for the Teacher Academy of Maryland program for future teachers. And whereas Ms. Nicholson-McKinnon excels as a leader in the Mathematics Department Chair, Instructional Leadership Team Chair, Tennis Coach, Varsity Math Team Coach, Senior Class Advisor, and New Teacher Mentor. Whereas Ms. Nicholson-McKinnon represents the staff of Parkside High School and joins a distinguished group of educators who have been recognized for demonstrating outstanding leadership, dedication to the education of our children, and professional achievement. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council recognizes and acknowledges Ms. Nicholson-McKinnon as the 2018, 2019 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year, and encourages all citizens to congratulate Ms. Nicholson-McKinnon on her accomplishment, done this 17th day of April 2018, and signed by the entire county council.
If any of you would like to say anything, feel free.
You don't have to, but it would be nice.
I'll speak. I just want to say thank you for your continued support, thank you for being in attendance on that Friday, March 23 at Parkside. That meant a lot to me and my family, and my students who have been able to speak on my behalf. Thank you again for Wycomico County, again. It's been an honor so far, and I know the ride's just beginning. So thank you again for having us today.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this morning is a public hearing on Resolution Number 30-2018, approving lease amendments Number 5 and 6 between Wycomico County, Maryland, and the United States of America for approximately 225 square feet of office space in the Wycomico County Airport Terminal Building for a period of 10 years, commencing May 1, 2018, and ending April 30, 2028. A public notice was published in the Daily Times stating that a public hearing would be held this morning at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. This time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution Number 30-2018. If you would like to make any comments in reference to this resolution, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution Number 30-2018. Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 30-2018.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
The only question I have is in the opening line of the resolution where it just says it's between Wycomico County, Maryland, and the United States of America. Should it be any more specific? It seems generic to just say, "United States of America," but is that as specific as we need to be? Is it not within some agency?
I think it will cut the mustard. I, certainly, that's the way they've been done in the past.
Okay.
So.
It's typically what we've done.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Any other questions, councilman?
Well, it seems like a small area to be leased out, but I'm pleased that we are leasing those areas out.
Other comments? Councilman Hall, any comments? I know you serve, you're very close to the airport, you did a lot of work with it.
We worked on this in a work session and talked about it pretty extensively for the last couple of months, and this is an addition that the FAA has needed for the last 10 years. It is a small area, like Councilman Dodd said, and it'll be a great asset to them, and I'm sure it'll be a great asset to the airport also.
Thank you, Joe. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 30-2018 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next on the agenda is to receive the county executive's operating budget for fiscal year 2019. The Director of Administration actually hand-delivered the budget to my office this morning shortly after 8:00 a.m. The budget will be processed as a legislative bill and will be ready for introduction at the next council meeting. The council will also hold a public hearing on the proposed budget on May 1, at 6:00 p.m. in council chambers. Following the public hearing, we'll start having budget work sessions. The budget is to be adopted by June 1, but that date can be extended to June 15 by resolution of the county council. If the budget is not adopted by either of those dates, then the budget as submitted by the county executive will become automatically adopted.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Any questions from council? Okay.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a presentation by the Singer Group on the Wycomico County Salary Study.
Right here. Be great. Do you have anybody else?
No.
Okay.
And Paula Singer sends her apologies due to the rescheduling, she wasn't able to make it today.
Okay.
I do have the presentation downloaded on the laptop, if you will me put it on the TV screen.
That would be perfect, yes. And is it on this one, or should I use my own? Oh, it's loaded on that one. Perfect. So then I can go right to that one. And while that's coming up, my thought was to walk through the process, what we did, then talk a little bit about findings and recommendations, and then open it up for questions. I don't know if that sort of works with your format?
Yes.
Or what you were thinking?
Yep. What I would do, make sure you have a microphone, and first thing we want you to do would be to announce for the public your name and your position, your representation.
A little bit of an introduction.
Sure, thank you.
That's right. My name is Lorraine Cottori, and I am a consultant with the Singer Group. I have been working with them for the last 18 years, working on projects primarily with local governments with regards to compensation and classification. Paula Singer, who we worked on this project together, was unable to attend today due to the rescheduling based on the weather event last month, so she really apologizes for not being here. I will be walking through the project with you. I'll start with an overview of our process, what we did. And that first slide talks about the goals of the project. When we came on board, our scope was to review the salary structure that you currently had. It was a market update, so we were really looking at what the current system was, what your classifications were, what your salary was, and then updating those based on market data. The goal was to ensure that pay was equitable, fair, and competitive based on who your market was. We also wanted to make sure that your band structure was aligned with your strategic goals. And what that means is to make sure that you're able to recruit and retain the best staff that you're able to. So why now? Your last study was done in 2005. Since then, there had been a lot of changes. The market had been through an upturn and certainly the downswing. As a result, there had been many adjustments to pay that were made that may not have been consistent across the whole structure because the study wasn't done as a comprehensive one. So making sure that the bands were reflective of the market, that you were where you needed to be, looking at your positions, you'd done a lot of hiring, the county had grown since 2005, making sure that your positions were classified correctly and in the correct band, and then making sure that you're able to, of course, recruit and retain effectively because you're able to hire people because your salaries are where they need to be, so you're competitive in the market. One of the concerns that we found out once we came on board was that there was compression. So you had people sort of bunched up, your longer-term employees might have been getting the same salary as people who were newly hired because of the way the bands were and the salaries were a bit low at the minimum of the range. So looking at addressing compression and how people can be moved through the bands more equitably. The scope of work was in two big phases. The classification piece was how we were looking at how the positions were aligned with each other, looking internally, how your grade structure was from top to bottom. The compensation component was looking at how positions were paid. So how are you paying people in relation to the market? Are you being competitive, and are you fair? The scope of the study included all county positions with the exception of the Circuit Court, your sworn officers in the Sheriff's Department, and also your State's Attorney The people involved, it was a fairly extensive project, the Director of Human Resources, Michelle Ennis, and Corey Houston, the HR specialist, worked closely with us, gathering information, scheduling meetings, and really just being our point of contact for the entire project. County leadership and department heads also participated, and I'll tell you a little bit about what their role was, and then the consultants, both Paula and myself. Staff also participated, and I'll talk a little bit about that in the next slide. So this is a brief overview of the project. Is it okay that my back is to you? I feel a little uncomfortable about that. We had a number of planning conference calls. Bi-weekly, we would talk with Human Resources to make sure we were getting information. As you can imagine, when you're dealing with a compensation and a classification study, we need job descriptions, we need position information, we need to know these policies and procedures of regards to compensation and classification at the county. So a lot of conversations. We also met with the county exec and the Director of Administration at the very beginning of the project. We also had a group meeting with county department heads where, in fact, we were in this room, where we sat and talked with them about what's working, what's not working with regards to classification and compensation, looking at their departments specifically, what they would like to see in a new compensation structure. We did have one-on-one interviews with nine of those department heads, again, just digging deeper into their departments and what they would like to see in a classification study and a compensation study. We conducted a whole job evaluation. This is part of that internal review, that classification process, where we're looking at how the jobs align with each other. There were specific departments that we heard were in the most pain, I would like to say, like your IT corrections, Human Resources. So we certainly got additional information in addition to job descriptions. We had position description questionnaires completed by 120 staff, and these are about 12 to 13-page documents where we ask what the essential functions of the job are, level of supervision, supervisory responsibility, level of decision-making, impact of the decisions made. So it's a very extensive document that gives us good job information, and it's accurate and it's up to date. Supervisors review that document, so employees fill it out, supervisors review, make comments, and then we look at them and see, you know, are there huge discrepancies between what the supervisor is saying and what the employee is saying? And this document forms the basis of how we look at the classification of the positions in the entire county. Then the external piece is the market compensation study. We conducted that, and I'll show you who we asked to participate in the study, and we had some additional questions with regards to benefits that we included in that. So the benefit survey, we did certainly developed a classification and compensation band structure based on all the information that we collected during the process. And then the implementations, the final phase where we did a costing impact, how much does it cost to bring people to the new bands that were developed, and recommendations of how to move people through those bands. We had, as I mentioned, meetings with the department heads. Some of the key issues that came up around classification and compensation was that the last study was done more than 10 years ago, so it had been a very, very long time, that there were adjustments in salaries that had been made four years ago in 2014, but they had not included everyone. So that being consistent and fair across the county was a concern of many department heads. They talked about being short-staffed, having trouble recruiting staff, having trouble retaining staff, and a limited ability to promote was also another one with regards to compensation as well. So we did the study, and just to talk a little bit about how we do the survey, we defined positions that we're going to include in the survey. We don't include every single one of the county's positions. We pick what we call our benchmark positions, and we identified those in collaboration with our discussions with department heads and also with Human Resources and also compensation best practice. We identified organizations to survey, who does the county consider their competitor, where are you recruiting people from, where are you losing people to, and making sure that we had those people included in this survey. We conducted the survey, compiled and analyzed the data once it came back, and what that means, data effective July 2017, was we want to make all the data effective at a certain point. So when you implement, you know that everybody's data, we're looking at apples-to-apples, we're not looking at some people's data, it's old data, 2016 data, other people have given you information for their next budget year. We wanted it all to be at the same time, and it's effective July 2017. And then we combined our market data with the internal findings, that grouping of the positions from the highest to the lowest, with the market data to come up with the band structure and the placement of positions within those bands. I'll just go over the survey. We didn't, we conducted multiple surveys because you are a county government, you have many departments. You talked about the airport, so that's one of them. Not everybody we surveyed had an airport. So we sent out a specific survey to airports. There are some airports that we didn't survey the county, so we did a separate survey for them, a separate survey for the detention center, and then a local government survey and a non-local government survey. We also did some market pricing, and what that is, is we find it's very hard for us to get private sector data. They're not as willing as local governments to share information. So we buy data sources, Mercer, ERI, big surveys, and get market data that way.
Want some more?
Yes, please, thank you.
Question?
Oh, absolutely. I'm sorry, yes, your concern, yes.
In your surveys, when you contacted the other counties, did you specify whether you were contacting somebody that, say, detention center or airports or whatever were, union or non-union?
For some of them, we did, and for some, that really came up in the additional questions. We had some questions where we were asking them about whether they were, what's the word called? Whether they were requiring certification for, like, correctional officers and that. So that came out in that section, not so much in the compensation study where we were asking about straight pay.
Okay. How did you define the 115 benchmark positions?
That was a process of literally going through each position in the county, looking at the ones that had multiple incumbents. So we want to make sure we're looking at positions that have the broadest coverage across the county. We also were looking for positions where you are having trouble recruiting and retaining staff, positions where we, there had been discussion, or certainly department heads know that they've been having trouble recruiting, positions where they were concerned about what the pay was. And then we also made sure, looking across the county, that we had covered all levels, so it wasn't top-heavy where we just have management positions that we're serving, making sure that we had maintenance, we had corrections, we had all the different departments covered from top to bottom, and that's why we had such a big number of positions.
Okay.
Okay. Let's see. So these are the positions. You'll see, let me go back a little bit, the ones that are in red font are the ones that are market-priced, so these are the ones that we asked for publish, published data, so private sector data. Even though your county government, some of your positions do cross over into the private sector, and we want to make sure that that was covered. And then positions in black font were the ones that went to one of these surveys, either the airport, detention, local government, or non-government. And the ones in blue font were in both. They were in the published data and also in the government survey. So there's a rundown. I won't go into all of those, but as you can see, there really is a good cross-section of departments and levels of the organization. These are the participants. We had 20 survey participants. The, I want to say Salisbury University also provided some data, but not, they didn't complete the entire survey. But we had a good cross-section and good coverage. We were quite pleased with the response rate that we got. So we had detention centers, we had airports, we had the regional hospital. We were surprised by the hospital. We normally don't get them to participate. We got the university's data, so good broad section of data. The survey participants, I'm not sure if I mentioned before, these were identified based on people that you hire from or lose people to, people you consider to be your market in terms of where you want to be competitive with. The published data sources that we used are the Economic Research Institute survey, the HRA-NCA survey, and then the Mercer surveys. And then we also looked at the Mako survey and pulled data from there as well. So how did we get the survey data? Two kinds of surveys. One was the custom survey, where we developed the survey, drafted position, brief position descriptions that we sent to the participating organizations. The reason for this is that we don't match title to title. As you know, titles in one county can be very different from titles in another county. So went through the process of developing many job descriptions with a sort of three or four lines of what the job is, and then an education and experience component that was included, so that for 115 jobs, that was done. So a lot of work there, but again, just to make sure when we get the data back that they are matching apples-to-apples. We would even ask participants, how well does your job match? Is it 80% match or 90% match? And if it was less than an 80% match, we might not use it because it really isn't apples-to-apples. Or we might make an adjustment, a percentage adjustment. If they said they were supervising, for instance, and/or responsible for a whole fleet of cars, if yours wasn't, we would make that adjustment. So a lot of information going into the matching of the jobs. We would follow up with participants where we did not either agree or had questions about the positions that they were matching, just to get additional clarification and really making sure that we were looking at apples-to-apples. Some definitions.
Can you go back to the last one?
Oh, absolutely. Just the last, this one?
Yes. Can you, you skipped over, can you explain the quality control part of it?
Oh, yes, that was the piece. Oh, yes, that was the piece where we would call, once we got all the data back, we would look at it. Sometimes there might be something that would jump out that didn't look quite right. We would call and follow up with them. So really making sure that that data was what we needed and was accurate so that we were matching. Because what happens is we would take that data and then compare it to your salaries and come up with a structure. So we did a lot of follow-up with participants and a lot of questions where we didn't completely agree or where we had doubts, we would ask for the job description of the position so we could look at it and really make sure that it was a match. Good, good questions, thank you. Some definitions before we go into the findings. When we collect the data, we don't just collect one data point. We have several. In fact, I think our survey has, I want to say 12 columns. But essentially what we're looking for is an actual average salary. And we asked participants to tell us how much they're paying, the take-home pay is for their incumbents. So if it's a single incumbent position, it would be the actual pay for one person. If it was a multiple incumbent position, we'd ask them to average that and tell us on average how much those individuals, their mechanics, were making. Then we would also ask for that same position, what is the minimum? What is the hiring salary? What is the entry level pay for that position? So what's the minimum of the range? And then we would also ask, what's the maximum of the range for that position? So that data, I'll show you a breakdown of what it came out to when we compared the county. The range spread is the distance between the minimum of the salary range and the maximum of the salary range. And then at market, where we identify positions at market, is where they're between 5 and minus 5% of the market. So you're 5% above or 5% below, that's considered at market. If you start to get to 10%, then you're significantly misaligned with the market. And then anything over 10% would be significantly misaligned with the market. And that would be, and that could be either ahead of the market or behind the market, depending on the position. So what did we find? Overall, we found that the ranges for the county were behind the market, especially at the minimum of the salary range. Overall, when looking at your non-exempt positions, so your lower-level positions, they tended to be more behind than your exempt positions. Also, with regards to actual salaries for both exempt and non-exempt, they were, they were behind, not significantly behind, but certainly behind for your non-exempt staff more than your exempt staff. And then range maximums were either ahead of or at market. Now, I keep talking about ranges, but the county has bands, so those are much wider than ranges. And that was because in your previous study in 2005, I believe, they developed a band structure. And that allows for more flexibility in terms of hiring, promoting. Although each band, I do want to mention, has specific sort of requirements. You don't just, the band isn't to be treated as a range. You don't move from the minimum of the maximum to the band without some kind of justification to move from one band to the next. You treat the divisions within the band like ranges, like salary ranges, which to me is one downside of having a band structure because people then look at the maximums and feel that that's their earning potential when it isn't, it's really the end of their range within the band. Okay. So looking here, you can see on average, when looking at the actual average salaries, your exempt positions tended to be 6% behind the market. Now, that's not too bad because remember, it's plus 5, minus 5 is considered at market. So you really could say those positions are at market, but they aren't because they're above 5%. So very close there. Your non-exempt positions more so at 11% behind market at actual average. And then if you look at all positions together, 9% behind market. At the minimum of the range, the exempt positions were where they needed to be and your non-exempt positions were further behind. But when you looked at all positions together, you could see there's a, you're behind there. When you look at the maximums though, because again, it's a band structure, your maximums tended to be higher or more aligned with the market. I do want to note though here, even though you can see an average of positions being behind the market, it doesn't mean that all the positions of the county were behind. There are some that are ahead of the market. This is just an average of that.
Can you go back?
Yes.
Did you mention or touch on the Fair Labor Standards Act that was at the bottom?
Oh, okay. This was just when we were looking at which positions, for all positions, you know, there were 9% behind the market. But we wanted to look at a little breakdown as well. And we did it based on whether positions were exempt or non-exempt. So those that were eligible for overtime pay and those that were not. So it's just a way of breaking it out. We could have looked at supervisory positions and management positions and then line staff. But for purposes of this, we looked at exempt and non-exempt and we saw that there were differences in how you all were paying your staff.
One question on that. So with the exempt positions, you know, being 12%, you know, the range maximum, was that, you know, the average can be skewed by having a lot of, you know, a lot of positions, a little bit or one position with a lot? Do you know what it was there? Was there one or two positions that are really above average that are skewing it? Or is this, you know, how did that happen?
For these, it wasn't necessary. There were, I will say, there were one or two exempt positions that were, I don't want to say out of bounds, but certainly way ahead of the market. But there were also some that were further down in the market. And we did, when we were developing the salary structure, and I think you have that as a separate handout, the one with the position titles on there, that's where that data came out. So this was really just looking at it overall. And then when we started to place the positions within the range, that's when we'd look at, is this position far ahead of the market? And if it was, is it because, there could be reasons. It could be they had long tenure and they've been there 30 years whilst everybody we surveyed had only been there three years. I mean, there are extenuating circumstances for that. But that's where we started to look at the positions individually. Okay. So what did we do with all that data? We've started to talk a little bit about that. We adjusted the ranges and the bands to reflect the market. We, when developing the bands and making those adjustments, because we were adjusting your bands, we wanted to make sure that we were looking at the market data, that that was a factor, but also that the internal classification component was a factor as well. So we're looking at two pieces. It wasn't just all market. And in looking at the internal findings, that would be the duties and responsibilities, going back to why we did that quality control with the participants just to make sure that we were matching apples to apples. So the benefits summary, I'll talk very, I'll just give a sort of overview on that. With regards to benefits, we asked, this question was, benefits as a percentage of salary, if you include all your FICA and all of that, what does the county pay for benefits as a percentage of salary? And you can see you're doing pretty well with regards to the people who responded to that question at 45%. This, these next three slides are a snapshot of your benefits. The green is you're ahead of the market or the people that we surveyed. Yellow is you're right at market and red is you're behind or lagging. And you can see in terms of benefits cost, that was the number I just showed you, you're ahead. Looking at eligibility of when people are eligible for coverage, certainly consistent with the people we surveyed. Your health benefit premiums, vision, prescription dental, retiree benefits, all those seem consistent with the people who participated in the survey. Same with your defined contribution plan, your deferred benefits and your death benefits. Your group term life insurance, you're a little bit behind because you don't offer an employer-paid plan. And that's similar to something else over here. Let me not get to that first. And then again, your long-term disability, you're consistent with the market. Vacation, you lag the market when looking at the service milestones. However, when you combine your paid holidays and your floating days, you are ahead of the market that way. So it's not, you never really can just look at one number. You always have to look at it as a sort of a whole. And that's true of the compensation piece as well, not just the benefits. So benefits, you are doing really well. We did ask some questions with regards to shift differential when we talked with department heads.
Here's a question before we get into shift differential. When you reviewed the initial data, you had recommended that we should adjust the ranges and bands to reflect the market?
That's correct.
I must mean that would be either way?
Yes, it could have been.
When, when you presented your data on benefits, there was no recommendation as to what we should or shouldn't do?
Our, that's correct, not on here. We would, we would not recommend that you adjust your benefits.
But you suggest that we adjust the ranges and the bands, but you don't. And sometimes it's a fine line between benefits and those ranges.
Right, and the reason that we were looking to at your benefits is looking at the sort of total compensation. Like if your benefits had been far behind the market, we might have recommended adding more to your salary structure to sort of balance that out. So it was more looking at it as a total compensation component. But since your benefits were ahead, we didn't recommend that your bands then be further ahead of the market to compensate for that. In terms of.
So when you suggest that we adjust our ranges and bands to reflect the market, you're just saying, are you saying that we only, we should only adjust those down and not up?
Well, if the market had said you were way ahead, we might have not said reduce your, well, we, what we'd have said is you could reduce your age, but certainly don't reduce people's pay. Nobody, you know, we wouldn't say take away pay because people are being paid more than we feel, you know, than the market bears. But we would have certainly said, you know, you're either where you need to be. You could reduce the minimum of the range, maybe keeping the maximum as it is. That way the earning potential remains the same. But we might, that is something we could have suggested. But because you were behind, that wasn't a recommendation that we made. We found that you were behind the market.
Well, the only reason I should say that, because it seems like it's a broad description as far as when you say adjust the ranges and the bands to reflect the market. Is that the market also allowing for benefits or not?
I see what you're saying. No, the, when I say the market in this particular case, it's the positions that we, the organizations that we surveyed and then that data. But then when we come to developing the ranges, it is a factor. We would have considered, if your benefits were behind, we would have considered the benefit market as well. But in this case, we did not make an adjustment based on your benefit piece. Meaning what we, what we would have had is your salary range as it is. And we might have said, maybe because your benefits are so good, you might want to push it back, depending on budget, again, if you have the money to do it. We might have said, maybe you can minus 5% because it compensates with the benefits piece because then you want to make sure you're sustainable as well. Or on the flip side, if your benefits had been further behind, we might have said, put the money in your range structure. That way, when you're recruiting people, even though you don't have a good benefits package, you can offset it with a higher salary. So we would have made a sort of a percentage adjustment to the range.
Did you do that?
No, no, because your benefits were where they needed to be. You can see most of the yellow dots indicated that you were where the market said you should be. So no, we did not do that. Oh.
That's okay.
Okay. Some of the other questions were as a result of concerns that we heard from the department heads. One was with regards to shift differential. And these are the responses that we heard back. I believe the county doesn't offer shift differential, but the other organizations, I want to say two to one, do. And that's something we would suggest certainly looking into offering shift differential. It might be a way to retain or recruit some of your staff, your maintenance staff as well.
So none of our staff gets shift differentials?
No. Oh, they do, they do?
We do.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. Okay. Okay. All right. The, this is just a description of some of the policies that our participants. We asked for additional information with regards to who qualifies and what hours do you pay? And are there different levels of shifts? So that's here, whether it's evening, night, weekend, and they have a different differential for that and what it is. So just a little more detail on that. We also asked a question with regards to maintenance staff and the certification by the Correctional Training Center. And there were varied responses there. Some do require it and some don't. The county's HR department had also done a study and contacted a number of county jurisdictions asking the same question. And some of the ones that they had surveyed were not part of our compensation study, so the results are a little different there. So as you can see, five not required for three. Some positions were certified and for two, they were requiring it regardless. So our recommendations, based on all that information from the internal review and the external review, was to adjust the bands so they reflect market. And then that best practice is where what I was talking about would come in, where we're looking at not just the market, but also that component. Keeping them narrow at the lower end of the structure, you'll notice your, as you go towards the county executive, well, maybe not, as your department, well, maybe not even department heads. We recommend pulling those off the scale. But as you go up to your manager positions, they're wider because they tend to be career positions and don't really promote, you don't have level one, two and three of your senior managers. So those ranges at that level tend to be wider. But the ones at the lower end of the scale, we kept them narrower because you want people to promote up and a position is only really worth so much at that level. Increase band minimums, extend your band maximums. We maintain similar progressions between the grades, meaning your jump from your grades in between the grades. And I'll show you what that looks like in a bit. Divide the ranges into four bands so that there is some discretion with regards to hiring and education and experience. But again, it's not an automatic transfer from one band to the next. There's certain criteria that you would have to meet to move to the next level, whether it was additional experience, additional education and so on. We recommended removing the director positions from the structure because our understanding is that they're appointed anyway. So they wouldn't need to be there. Reclassifying two positions, this comes to what you were talking about, a little bit about positions that might have been higher or lower. We did recommend reclassifying two of them based on the market and then re-titling a number of your positions just to make it more consistent across the whole structure. The rationale for the reclassifications included, of course, the market data and then looking at the internal equity. You know, for these ones, they didn't have a job, family or supervised relationship, but looking at the complexity of scope, the overall fit in the organization, the level, as I said, the positions, we asked for information on level of decision-making, level of impact, level and type of communication. So in looking at the complexity and scope, those two positions got adjusted as well. So this is the structure that we ended up with. As you can see, the first three, well, the second and third columns, fourth columns, are your current structure. And then the ones, the third, the fourth, fifth and sixth are what we're recommending. Because it was a market update, we didn't redo the complete band structure. We fit it so that your new grades would fit onto the current structure, but at the closest point of the step in the band. point of the step in the band. So you can see there, your first grade fifteen, where you had a minimum of twenty-one thousand before that moved to twenty-four, so it's a higher salary there, and it's your current step eight. And the progression I was talking about on that second to last column is the difference between one grade to the next. And that could be based on the education, the supervisory experience, and it differs as you go from grade to grade. And it could also be market-based as well. The range spread, that eighty-five to a hundred, what I was talking about, you can see for your lower grades, it's eighty-five percent, and as you move higher, it moves up to a hundred percent. The movement within the band, I do want to note, and I've already mentioned it before, it isn't automatic. Each band is like a salary range, so even though it's very broad, somebody shouldn't look at the maximum as the potential maximum for their particular position. That just isn't the case. Within a band structure, the bands within the bands are your salary ranges, and movement is not automatic. So these are the proposed re-titling of positions, again, just to streamline it and make it a little more consistent across the, the county. And there are a number of those. So last but not least, I think this is the last slide, I know it's a long presentation. Bringing staff below the minimum of the first band to the minimum of the proposed band, that would be our first recommendation. So anybody who, as a result of the bands moving, was no longer on the structure, should be on the structure, so bringing those people to the minimum. Adjustments into bands two and three, we're suggesting that those could be phased in over a period of two or three years. So, meaning people within those bands, at least they were within the band structure, but either based on the, the education or experience criteria, they needed to move because compression was also an issue at the county. So find, making sure that there was a good distribution across the bands. And I'll show you the detail of that on the next slide. Annually, if possible, adjusting the structure. That way, you're looking at the structure each year, making adjustments each year so that you're not having to look ten years down the road and may, having to make big cost impact adjustments because of falling behind the market. Paying attention to the, the county's ability to recruit and retain staff, so as positions become open, or as people are having difficulty recruiting positions or retaining staff, looking at it proactively, saying, why are we having difficulty? Is it a salary concern? Do we need to look at what the market is paying for those positions? Certainly ensuring your job descriptions are accurate, and then looking at your structure every three to five years, just to make sure that it is consistent.
Who do you recommend reviews this every three to five years?
It could be an external consultant, it could be your HR group, but it wouldn't be just looking at a component, you know, not just one department. This would be a review looking system-wide, sort of organization-wide, because when you look at just one piece, then it, because the structure fits altogether, if you adjust some positions, then your, the others might not be where they should be because they weren't reviewed. So this would be a, a complete review of the, of the whole structure. This is the detail, the cost impact for bringing people to the minimum of each band. You only had nine people falling below the minimum of the, the very first band, and that would, those would be the ones we would absolutely recommend getting onto the structure. And then at the band two, you had a hundred and forty individuals, five individuals moving into band three, and no one moving into the fourth band. And then those are the associated costs with that. And those might change as people either have left the organization, and this has been a while since we made the recommendation, that those numbers may not be exact. And that was, that was everything I had to present. Any questions?
Questions?
I know it's a lot to say through.
I have, I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
How long did it take you to put this together?
The whole study?
Yes.
We started it in March of last year, and then completed it. So it, it took a while.
It's an excellent presentation, and thank you very much. I think it's very comprehensive. I had a question on page six, if we can go back to page six.
Uh huh.
One of the concerns, and, and it seems to be one of the major concerns, was HR. And can you elaborate a little bit?
Oh. Is that the right one?
Whereby?
Is that, I'm sorry, am I on the right one?
Page six?
Oh, seven, okay.
Let me see.
That's okay.
My pa, my page six.
Oh, that's right.
Let me see what...
The summary of issues from department heads, this one?
Uh, yes, yes.
Oh, okay. I believe, are you looking at that last bullet, need more support from HR?
Looking at it, at it generally overall. You know, is, are we getting what we need? Are you getting what you need? Did you get the information on a timely basis? And was it complete?
We did, we, we did get our information on a time. I will say, though, I think with regards to developing the survey, it, I, I think it's hard for people to know how comprehensive it is going in, and because job descriptions were not as current as they needed to be, with one hundred and fifteen positions, where we're looking at each title, each sort of a little summary plus educational experience, and then going to department heads and having to have them cross-check that and say, yes, indeed, this is true, that did take a long time. And I will say, it went longer than we had built into the process for that component. But again, I, I think understandably so, just because there, there hadn't been the job descriptions as accurate as we, as they, not as they should have been, but when you're doing a study.
Had it, had it never been done before?
The job description?
As comprehensive as you did it, of course.
Oh, I think, I'm sure when they did it in two thousand and five, that, that would have been the same. But jobs, some have changed since then.
Right.
And some have remained the same, but for the most part, jobs have changed. And we wanted to make sure that, you know, we're not sitting here after the fact going, well, the jobs that we surveyed were not accurate.
I understand.
So when, you know, when it did take a bit of time to do that piece, we didn't, we felt it was worth waiting for that information, and we certainly didn't feel it was extraordinary just again...
It was not an extraordinary delay.
Just because of the number of positions involved.
There were, there were a couple of things that stood out, and one of them was cost life insurance for employees, which I'm sure it will address in the future. And also shift differential, which seems to be a minor concern, a concern of some sort, but...
Right.
But, but otherwise, in your professional opinion, would you say that we're in relatively good condition as far as?
Considering that your last study was in two thousand and five?
Right.
Yes.
Good.
So I, I do think that efforts and steps have been taken by the county to give increases where you could, when you could. So in, in that respect, I think the county did do a good job in trying to keep up, recognizing that you did have a downfall in the two thousand eight, two thousand seven. So yes, was it where it needed to be? No, but could we see that steps had been taken to make an effort to get people where they should be?
Thank you again.
On page seven, the last, need more support from HR in hiring. Did they identify, or did you identify what HR could do to help in that situation?
Right, my understanding of this was there was a process where, either it was a training process or a process where managers were taking a more active role in, in the hiring, and they felt that they would have liked to have had more support. And I've seen it go both ways in organizations where some want it to be more centralized and ha, and if that has been the culture, then it's very difficult for staff to suddenly pivot and not do it, you know, and have to take more responsibility for it. There are other organizations where people want to be the sole hirers of their department and would like as little HR contact as well. I didn't see that here. That certainly wasn't the case here.
Right, just one more comment. Where do we go from here? What's, what's the county council's position on this? Where do we go?
I think it's a position for the executive and the staff to review and see exactly how they need to make the adjustments, whether it's how are the compensation like mess there, whether it's the bands, whether it's the ranges or benefits. That's my take on it. The, a question I had, and understanding the broad scope of what you're trying to address, on page thirty-nine on your structure recommendations, you had specifically noted that two positions needed to be adjusted.
Oops, I'm sorry.
And I was wondering what the, what the thought process was behind deciding to downgrade out of a hundred and fifteen positions, how we selectively chose to downgrade one director and then to move up one grade. And I couldn't understand that because it seems like it's a reclassification of the job, because in the hundred and fifteen positions, you referred to as the revenue specialist, but here you're calling it a recrodation specialist.
Oh, that might have, oh, go ahead, I'm so sorry.
It's all right, it's page thirty-nine on your document.
Okay, there we go.
I was somewhat surprised to see that you drilled down to individual employees as opposed to others, the broad overview. So I was wondering what the impetus was as far as specifically decided to downgrade a director and upgrade either, I guess, you're going to retitle it from a revenue specialist to a recrodation specialist, is that correct?
Right, that is correct. And with the, with the, actually, both of these, the market did indicate that this was one of the ones, I think, Mr. Mark, where you talked about having an, an outlier, this was one of the ones, we had an outlier in the market data for the director of the local management board. So that was market-based. The recrodation specialist, again, it's been a very long time, but my understanding was some of those students had changed with regards to this position.
Is it a new position?
No, I think it's a, no, it's an existing position and the scope of the...
I say that because you, you stated a recrodation specialist, but in the hundred and fifteen job descriptions, there was only a revenue specialist.
Right, that was one of the ones that went through a title change.
Okay.
So, no, the job was in existence, the job was in existence, and it has changed from the revenue specialist's title.
Okay.
I think you had something too.
Yeah, I got one more. I'm going to ask for an opinion now.
Oh, dear.
I know you deal with facts. You know, you did the benefits and the salary, and I know times change. What seems to be the driving force now as far as hiring? Is it more salary or more benefits?
That's a really good que, and I wish I had a straight answer for you, but it really depends on the life cycle of the individual. I find with your younger people coming in, they're certainly more focused on the salary, whatever that minimum pay is, whereas as you, so you could also say at your lower-level positions, people are really concerned about salary. But as you move to people who are older, getting towards retirement, the benefits are really a big, a big push there.
So you would say that the person being hard initially would be more concerned with salary, but as they stay in the workforce, they would become more influenced by the benefits?
They would be, and also if you're hiring an older workforce, they would be more concerned with the benefits as well, certainly. And I, but I will say, for, we are seeing people with families now, they are looking at, and especially if you have a two-person household where one spouse is getting benefits or they're the ones who are responsible for the benefit component, then they really are looking at that. And people are coming in the door knowing that the benefits are better and willing to take a small cut in salary to get the benefits. So I wish I could say it's one way or the other, but it really does depend.
Are you aware of any employers that will pay the employee more to not take benefits, such as somebody that's on their spouses?
They, there are a couple, and I know a lot of private sector, they do offer, the name slips me right now, but they, they, they will give a little payout for you to often take the, the, yes, yes. And it's cheaper for them too, because it's, is that something the county is looking to? Yes, but we do, yes, I have seen that.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you all, thank you for taking the time. Appreciate that.
Next on the agenda, we have several resolutions that are appointments to boards and commissions, starting with resolution number thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen, confirming the appointment of Rebecca Maltonato to the Lower Shore Workforce Investment Board. The Workforce Investment Board is responsible for overseeing the Workforce Investment Act funds and programs in the local community.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Entertained a, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Next is resolution number thirty-two, two thousand and eighteen, confirming the appointment of Castine Farmer to the Commission on Aging. The Commission on Aging assists the Utterly and Wacomiko County with health, social, economic, recreation, and environmental problems.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution thirty-two, two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Should be noted that Councilman Dodd is not here.
Okay.
Thanks.
Next is resolution number thirty-three, two thousand and eighteen, confirming the appointment of John Cope to the Commission on Aging.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution thirty-three, two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is resolution number thirty-four, two thousand and eighteen, confirming the appointment of Carol Zimmerman to the Commission on Aging.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution thirty-four, two thousand and eighteen. Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is resolution number thirty-five, two thousand and eighteen, confirming the appointment of Joyce Farahi to the Commission on Aging.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution thirty-five, two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
The next item for consideration is resolution number thirty-six, two thousand and eighteen, confirming the reappointment of Dr. Thomas G. Keaton to the Audit Committee. The Audit Committee helps to ensure that management properly develops and adheres to a sound system of internal controls, that procedures are in place to objectively assess management's practices, and that the independent auditors objectively assess the government's financial reporting practices.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution thirty-six, two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is resolution number thirty-seven, two thousand and eighteen, confirming the reappointment of Phyllis T. White to the Audit Committee.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution thirty-seven, two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is resolution number thirty-eight, two thousand and eighteen, confirming the reappointment of Andy Kim, CPA, to the Audit Committee.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution thirty-eight, two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is resolution number thirty-nine, two thousand and eighteen, confirming the reappointment of Tony C. Nichols to the Audit Committee.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution thirty-nine, two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is resolution number forty, two thousand and eighteen, confirming the reappointment of Ralph E. Capen to the Audit Committee.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution number forty, two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, the next item for business is resolution number forty-one, two thousand and eighteen, authorize in Bob Barker Company, Inc. as a sole source vendor for the purchase of a van cell Elite prisoner transport unit. The Bob Barker Company, Inc. is the only distributor of the transportation unit van, and the Department of Corrections is requesting a waiver for the competitive bidding requirement. And we do have a representative from the Department of Corrections here.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution forty-one, two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, if you'd like to come up at the break, thank you. For the public, state your name and your position, please. Thank you.
Nicholas Rice, purchasing agent for the county.
Chris Tyler, Deputy Director, Department of Corrections.
Thank you. Questions?
I mean, so this is, what type of unit are we talking about? I mean, I understand that maybe this company produces this type, you know, only one company produces this type of unit. Aren't there other possible units that could be used? I mean, I'm completely ignorant of all this, so I guess why, why do we need it from this, this unit from this specific company, I guess?
Chris, I'll let you speak a little bit about the unit in particular. My understanding is this, this unit is a leading manufacturer of this type of unit. Obviously, there are many different ways that you can handle putting something like this in a vehicle. One of the benefits of, of this one is it can be removed easily and go along with another vehicle as that vehicle gets phased out, a new vehicle's purchased. But you are correct, this company is the manufacturer and the sole distributor of this product.
Which, which brings up another question, I think. Is it necessary that we have this type of product in the van, or could we use something that's more generic?
So this unit itself divides the transport compartment into four separate and secure areas. This would allow transport inmates on the same van that would normally have been done through separate transports. So I think the benefit of this unit is it does separate out inmates, so you can make less frequent trips.
And there's, there's no other company that makes similar cells or similar ways to divide the transport up, prisoners up? I mean, is this the only company that makes these sort of things?
I can't answer that question. I'm sitting in for Mr. Kimball today, so I will certainly research it.
Yeah, Mr. Kimball was the one that brought this to my desk. Like I said, this, this unit appears to be one of the, one of the better units and the leading manufacturer in the country, which is why they, they were going with this unit.
I mean, from my perspective, I don't think there's any problem, you know, if we really need it, but it does seem, you know, why, I, I do have questions about why there's a need for just this one. If there's, you know, this is the very unique product, you know, and they don't, you know, another company makes a product like this, and yeah, that makes sense, but if there's other products like it, why are we favoring this company over another with that competitive bidding? So, I mean, and I guess we can't answer that question here, so.
No, what we can do is we can definitely get your responses to why this unit in particular, from the sole source aspect of it. If there's, if we can provide you with information that satisfies that, then yes, this is truly a sole source in the aspect that this manufacturer is the sole distributor of that product.
Do we have, do we already have this product in other vans, or is this the first time we've bought this product?
This will be the first for our detention center.
So we're using another product that does the same thing?
Does not.
Does not?
Right. Currently, right now, we can only transport one particular type of client to the courthouses or medical appointments or whatever. This particular compartment will allow us to transport males and females at the same time, juveniles, as well as...
Compartmentized, I see some.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Makes the most savings of it.
Yeah, I definitely see why that might be a good thing to have, it's just, is this the only company that does that?
I've not seen another company, but I'll have to research it.
And, and my understanding is Kimball would have had some of those answers for us, but like I said, he's not here today.
I guess my other question is, Nick, why do you think we need to go through the process of doing sole source rather than just do a RFQ and send it out to, you know, put it out there and let these people respond if they're the only one? Is there a benefit that you see?
If, like we said, if there's a justification as to why this particular product, then doing a bidding process is really a waste of our time and their time.
Okay.
Yes, if that, if that is the direction that we're going, then there's no need for that.
Sure.
If there's not, then you are correct, we would open it up to basically say we need something that can transport four...
Does this, spec this out.
Correct. But again, if, if there's nothing out there like that, other than this product, then, then that is just a waste of time.
Makes sense.
So this unit is to, is being purchased to retrofit a van?
It's made specifically for a specific type of van.
Okay, so I'm assuming that you can't buy the van with this unit already in it?
That is correct, you cannot.
They don't make it?
That is correct.
Okay. Can this unit be taken out of this van and put in another van?
That is correct, yes it can.
You're saying it's being made for this specific van?
Well, it's made for a specific model of van. So if we get the same model from year to year, we can move it from, from van to van.
Sounds like this company should be making a lot of money. They're the only one in the country.
They found a niche.
Yeah.
And it could very well be that they patent the product.
Right.
Like I said, we'll, we'll definitely get that information to you.
Okay. Any other questions? Find out what the resolutions are. Hang on a second. Thank you, Joe. Entertained a motion to, all those in favor of resolution forty-one, two thousand and eighteen, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you very much.
Give us that information if you will.
Absolutely.
Even though we passed it.
Next is resolution number forty-two, two thousand and eighteen, authorize in the county executive to accept a grant award from the Mosaic Group and the amount of thirty-five thousand to enhance implementation of the Maryland Screen Brief Intervention Referral to Treatment Program in the Wacomica County Department of Corrections.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution forty-two, two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
Second. If you could just give us an overview of the Mosaic Group and...
Okay, we were, the Wacomica County Department of Corrections was one of five counties that were selected to receive a grant for more substance abuse programming. In that, we were selected for the, I would say, Esper, instead of saying Screen Brief Intervention, Referral to Treatment all the time, Esper. And we were given two options in order to receive this particular grant, not the Mosaic, but to get to the Mosaic, in which we chose the option in which the Health Department would provide a peer case manager, and one year the grant would pay for that person, and then after that, the detention center pays for it. Mosaic Group is in connection with Esper, which has offered us a thirty-five thousand dollar grant to assist in the cost to handle that peer support specialist for office equipment, a vehicle, because you're going to be doing traveling, computer, and things like that, as well as part of the money being used for clientele, whether they need transportation or if they need vitro shots or whatever the case may be. And that's what thirty-five thousand dollars is for.
Questions from council?
Chris, you said that we've got thirty-five thousand this year, and then we've got ten thousand per year after this, for this program. I, I think that's what you, I understood.
No, for this first year, we have a grant that gives us a peer support specialist, which is a Health Department employee who will be at our facility.
Right.
In addition to that grant, Mosaic Group, who works closely with Esper, is offering us a thirty-five thousand dollar grant to help get that peer support specialist onboard.
Okay.
So it's to help with, to give them a vehicle, the laptop computer, the necessities in order for them to get the program started. And as far as I know, there's no mention of any other...
Continuing funding.
Continuing funds.
Okay.
So that would be the detention center.
This is one of those grants where you hire an employee and then, year after, you have to pay for them?
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay.
I guess you're planning to absorb that.
That is correct.
That expense. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution forty-two, two thousand and eighteen, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Hurley. At this time, we open for public, for public, excuse me, public comments. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, come to the podium, please state your, your name, your county of residence, and your concern.
My name is Mary Ashante, I live in Wacomica County. I'm president of Wacomica County NAACP. And first giving honors to God, honor to the council president and county council members, and all those assembled, good morning. Before I make my comments, I, I just want to say something about the resolution forty-one, twenty eighteen. I just heard some questions that weren't answered, but the resolution was passed. And as, as it's passed, that means that, that the, it would go to Bob Barker Company, Inc., as sole source of the vendor. And Councilman Matt Holloway mentioned if this was not the only company, if they would put out the bid. So that won't get done, the way that you all just did it. So all the questions that were asked are basically null and void, because this is carried through. I, I'm just saying that.
As a point of clarification, President Shawnee, you're a hundred percent correct. It could have been tabled. I believe we deferred to the, you know, to the director himself as to his recommendation that it was a sole source vendor, and there would not be anyone else that would respond to the RFQ as suggested by Mr. Holloway. But I, we do, we do appreciate your, your, your thoughts there. I understand.
Okay. I have a few invitations and announcements. On April the nineteenth, we, and we don't have any one here, I think, running for General Assembly, but April the nineteenth, six o'clock at Tarburg County Senior Center, Brooklyn Avenue in Easton, there will be a candidates forum, and it's sponsored by the Eastern Shore branches of the NAACP and several sororities. On April the twenty-sixth, at seven o'clock at Chipmunk Culture Center, Mr. Wayne Strasberg, county administrator, will be our speaker to talk about Wacomica County priorities and successes. And that's at Chipmunk Culture Center. And on May the third, six o'clock, we'll have a meet and greet for candidates running for office, and that will be at St. James Air Design Church, MAC Education Complex in Salisbury. And of course, everyone is invited. And seven o'clock will be the candidates forum. And that's at St. James Air Design Church, MAC Education Complex, 521 MAC Avenue in Salisbury. And unfortunately, today, at one o'clock, I won't be here to hear the report from the Board of Education. But on May the twenty-fourth, seven o'clock at Chipmunk Culture Center, we will have a panel and a roundtable discussion to talk about the DOJ agreement, settlement agreement with Wacomica County Public School. Parents, students, community advocates, and Wacomica County Public School representatives will, have been invited. And that's at 325 Broad Street, Chipmunk Culture Center. So we hope that you can make some of those events, you know, in whatever. And I'll just mention this, I've mentioned it before, I think several weeks ago, but in the budget, I was trying to get an understanding of that report. Would that report be online, ever put online that was just given?
Yes.
The survey?
Yes.
Okay, that's great.
You're talking about the, you're talking about the budget? Of the senior study, we can certainly put that on there.
Okay.
It's a public document.
Okay. And, and I, and I think that it should be put up. One of the things that I've, that I've mentioned early on in the past, before you had the budget hearing, I don't hear too many people come up and, and ask for support for Wacomica County Detention Center employees, especially correction officers, and for rehabilitative services for inmates and that type of thing. And I don't know where we stand in this county as opposed to other counties, but that's a dangerous job, and it's a high-stress job. And I, I hear law enforcement and their representatives come and talk, but over the years, it's been very few talk about the needs of the correction officers. And, and they're, they're very important, because if they can do a good job, and their rehabilitative services, some of the people that have a revolving door may not have, may not be involved in that revolving door. So let's keep in mind that it's important to have enough officers and to pay them adequate. Thank you.
Thank you, President Shawnee. Any other public comments? That concludes public comments. Council comments. Councilman Doug?
Yes, I'd like to thank everybody for attending. It was a great turnout today. Mrs. Ashante, I do agree with you about the corrections employees. It is a very tough job, just like law enforcement. I have a lot of friends that work in corrections or have worked in corrections. Some of them are in the room right now. It is a tough job, so thank you for pointing that out. On Maryland Day, we had a student from Delaware, Delmar Elementary School by the name of Mathias, I forget his last name, Mathias Ford. He held the flag representing Wacomica County, and I don't know if anybody recognized him for that or not, but he should be recognized. He's in the fifth grade. And at Mako, one of the St. Mary's County council members brought that to our attention, so I thought I would bring it up here. This past Saturday, a lot of Little Leagues held their opening day, and it was a great turnout. I wish I could have attended all of them, but I did attend Fruitland Little League, and we had some other members representing the state delegation there, and it was a good turnout. This Saturday, the nineteenth, not Saturday, but Thursday, the nineteenth, Ms. Ashante mentioned an event going on. There's always events going on around here, and the Salisbury area Chamber of Commerce has their ninety-eighth annual banquet award that night at La Quinta at six P.M. I think some council members will be attending that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Doug. Any other council comments? Presidential comments. Saturday, had the pleasure of attending the Fruitland Volunteer Fire Company banquet with Chief Townsend. It's always a good time to be over there. Good organization, of course, as always. We do appreciate all the work that all of our fire companies do in the municipalities as well as in the county. So again, congratulations to all the recipients of the awards at Fruitland and other volunteer fire company for the great job they're doing for their community. That being said, I'd like to entertain a, hold on. I think the next time, I think the next time we consider any, appealing to, to Annapolis for any legislation, it should be to change this, what we have to read in order to adjourn a meeting by law. Ask them if we could just keep it simple. Entertained a motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work sessions, followed by a closed work session pursuant to the Local Government Article Section three dash three oh five B three to consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose to protect the county's bargaining power.
Don't make that motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, meeting's adjourned. First item on the open work session is the RISE zone designation.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, how are you?
Well, how are you?
Great, thank you.
Lauren, I thought they were all here to see you.
I know, why, everybody's meeting. We're just getting into the fun stuff.
I never got to email.
Dave, would you like to come up?
I'm happy to.
Okay.
I would be happy.
Come on. There's no I in team, come on. Okay, well, essentially...
Introduce yourself and, and your position, so that everybody out there knows who you Introduce yourself and your position so that everybody out there knows who you are.
Sure, I'm Laura Soper. I'm the Director of Business Development for the City of Salisbury.
Allison Poltrum, the Deputy City Administrator for the City of Salisbury.
And Dave Ryan, Executive Director of Salisbury Wycomico Economic Development.
Glad to have you all here.
Well, the city has partnered with Salisbury University in pursuing a rise zone designation for the corridor stretching from the university to downtown Salisbury. The aim of this program is to spur economic development and community revitalization in this specified area, and it requires a partnership with an institution of higher learning, in this case Salisbury University, an application to the Maryland Department of Commerce for said institution to become a qualified institution, and finally, an application for the rise zone to become designated. Salisbury University submitted and received their qualified institution designation in April two thousand seventeen. To the extent provided, the tax credit we're looking at is a five-year credit proposed as eighty percent in the first taxable year, following the calendar year in which the property initially becomes qualified, and eighty percent in the second through fifth taxable years. And this credit is allocated by the department on the non-residential piece of any qualified properties. For the purposes of the income tax credit, the business entity is treated as being located in an enterprise zone. Income applies, receive the same income tax as provided by that designation. While it has these tax credits, it also creates the ability to create, to grant a TIF to developers making capital improvements in the zone. Unlike other TIFs, it has a little more leeway, and the proceeds can be used to fund public infrastructure as well as private improvements as they relate to the rise zone. So we're looking at about one hundred and twenty-nine point nine acres. As you can see in the map, again, it extends from the northern border of Salisbury University all the way to just right outside downtown. Do you folks have any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Sure.
I know what one is. I'd like for you to explain, just to make sure I'm right, what is a TIF? I think I know.
Tax increment finance area.
I know what that is, I know what the initials mean, but explain to it and how that works in this situation here.
Sure, well, it takes incremental increases in the taxes, sets them aside in a bond proceed, and the city can use those funds to fund public infrastructure and private improvements.
Who makes up the difference as far as the taxes go that would normally go into the general fund?
What difference, the...
So the taxes are paid into the general fund, correct?
Yes. So you would keep, the base amount of taxes would still come to the city and county. The incremental increase would go to the general fund to repay the bond. And then, once that bond is paid off, then the city and county would receive the entire amount of those taxes.
Can you just speak into the microphone, please?
We went through this about ten years ago with the old mall situation. How much of this hundred and twenty-nine acres falls into this commercial or this, would it all be, is it all commercial?
It's not all commercial, it's largely commercial. It's the stretch where the hospital is and down to the university, so.
Pretty old mall, the onus fell to the developer, so it didn't end up costing us, city or county, in a negative way. It was actually used in the state's models and guidelines for what a TIF is and how it works. The old mall and the Beacon Park developments were actually both TIF projects and were utilized from the state models and guidelines as examples on what a TIF is and how it works.
If I may, Mr. Holloway, I, no, it's fine. I believe this allows for a tax increment financing project. So it's almost like enabling legislation, and it broadens the use of those proceeds from the issuance of the bond. I don't believe it's an automatic. I believe if there was a tax increment finance project that would take place within this district, it would have to come back to both the city and if they chose to come to the county, then they would do it at that particular time.
This is an enabling step.
So I guess my question is, so the city's going to pursue this, is that correct? And does the city need the county to pursue it too, to do what the city's doing? Or would this, I mean, I know the county could offer, you know, additional, you know, since we have our own tax structure and things like that. But do you need the county for this, or can the city do it on their own? What, what is the, is there an ask here from the county?
The ask isn't much. I think the partnership between city and county would be very helpful. I don't think it is a requirement of applying for the rise zone.
It's not a requirement for, for the, no, sir. Much of that, by many of the acreage is already in the enterprise zone, which is a ten-year property tax credit and a ten-year income tax credit per new job. So it would, I believe, enlarge that district with just the rise zone portion. I think they tried to match the eighty percent discount on the improvements in the property values to what the enterprise zone is offering. But other than that small parcel, then when someone would really do the enterprise zone, I would think it would be more benefit for them to do that.
It would be mutually beneficial.
This adds a little more advantage, a little more benefit, a little more capabilities than what the enterprise zone offers. That's my question exactly, when we started pursuing this.
But we entered into the enterprise zone designation with the county as well. So I think in an effort of continuity of cooperation, we are seeking the county's agreement.
Laura?
Could I just add one thing on that? I've looked through the state code and the Comor regulations on these rise zones. And in this case, as I understand it, the city is applying with the college, Salisbury University. The only thing that would, I think, directly affect the county would be if we want to grant the same tax, property tax credit, I guess you would call it, as the city does, we would have to pass a resolution to do that. If we don't want to do it, then we don't have to pass the resolution.
Right. Thanks for the clarification.
But regardless, what the county does, if the city does this, the businesses in this zone will have all these benefits. And then, and then, but the county could potentially offer additional property tax benefits on top of what the city's already doing, so.
Most of the businesses actually have access to these credits already through the enterprise zone. So it's just, the rise zone, again, has that ability of a more flexible TIF area.
But yes, to answer that question, yes. I mean, the city would get a, if the county chose not to participate, then they wouldn't get the county's taxable portion off, right, the credit. But they'd still get the city.
I do think, just one more comment. I do think that it would have to be done on a zone-wide basis. In other words, you couldn't, I don't believe, under the regulations, I'm not sure of this, but I don't think you could do it on a property parcel-by-parcel basis. The county would either have to say, we're all in for the entire one hundred and twenty-eight acres, or we're not.
Sure. Yes, yeah. It would be a partnership of the application as a whole and not by parcel. That's correct.
And this, I'm not quite sure, but a TIF in itself usually is just to allow for the benefit of public infrastructure. Whereas this, I think, sounds like it goes one step further where it allows for tenant improvements. That's a little unusual, isn't it, for TIF?
It's a little unusual for a TIF project. It does broaden the use of those proceeds, though, that could be used not just for governmental purpose, but a, you know, private sector purpose. And there's far too many hypotheticals to even get into, frankly. But it would be a project-by-project basis. I think we'd have to come back and revisit that.
And the caveat being in the regulations is that the projects have to support the designation of the rise zone and the purposes of the rise zone. So that's something that the Maryland Department of Commerce would probably have leeway over, and obviously, city and county would as well.
I thought that a TIF always just was, was sort of allowed for a waiver of these taxes to allow the developer to then invest in infrastructure. So you're saying that the money physically is still collected, but it's put into a separate...
That's how I understand it, is that the increase in assessment of taxes gets put in a separate pot to repay bond proceeds. But Dave, all the...
It's a special fund, but we're getting into a tax increment finance as opposed to a rise zone. But yes, you would issue the bonds, the proceeds would be used to fund eligible expenses. Repayments would go into a special fund, a special fund would be used to retire the bonds. And after the amortization of those bonds, then it'd be back to normal taxation. But this is not presenting that. This is saying this allows a broadened use of the tax increment program, but we'd, a specific project, we'd have to come back.
I understand, I just was...
If somebody, a public agency, wanted to build a facility and then leasing out to the private sector, for instance, and they wanted to use a tax increment finance procedure or something, we'd have to come back. Or whoever's in this zone would have to come back.
The rise zone's a very project-based application. We are leaving it more open-ended. The mayor specifically mentioned medical education facilities to tie SU and PRMC together along that corridor, but he didn't want to specifically identify a project. He wanted to establish the relationship and make the application on a more broad end.
I was wondering why, why did the state choose to link this towards this particular institution? What is this, what is the thought process, what's the strategy with that?
The state probably sees value in those qualified institutions of higher learning. And I know, I believe that Baltimore has used it for research laboratories. They've used the same program and sought the designation. It's very much linked to the assets that universities have to offer and the projects that they can spur from the designation.
So they're trying to encourage, I guess...
Yeah, the idea is to...
Businesses that would be sort of helping with Salisbury University.
Or vice versa. And, and, you know, to, to enhance that collaboration, if you will, of what's going on on campuses across Maryland and what's going on on other parts of the city, so.
Would any business that locates in here, from the point of passage, receive these credits? Or would it be only, you know, the city pick and choose which businesses?
They'd have to apply for them, and they'd have to meet the qualifications. So in which this case, if they wanted the property tax credit, they'd have to invest fifty thousand dollars or more into their property. If they wanted the state income credit, they'd have to hire two or more full-time employees, and then they'd have to apply. And again, these applications would come in front of both councils.
And I believe it's non-residential, so commercial or industrial properties. And you'd have to do something to get the credit.
So it's the assessed value of the improvements.
So each credit application would be approved by the bodies and not just approved automatically? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, those would be, so it's very similar to enterprise zone. Whereas I receive an application from a business, it goes in front of city council first, and then it comes in front of county council.
But, I mean, any, I mean, a fast food restaurant could technically, I mean, under those sort of things. I mean, it doesn't have to be related to the college or medical or anything like that. I mean, you know, there's a lot of businesses in those corridors that are, I mean, you know, there's, you know, this corridor has been growing. You know, I mean, so, so these businesses would, you know, that were potentially invested in any way would kind of receive a break, you know, you know, kind of gravy on top of what they already do, so.
Well, and that's where the enterprise zone kind of falls in there. Since there's that overlay, I would likely encourage those businesses to go after enterprise zone because we get the fifty, the city and county receive the fifty percent reimbursement on those. And they receive a ten-year credit instead of the five. So in, in that case, with that overlap, most would probably go after the enterprise zone. Enterprise zone, unless it's ground-up development, is kind of nominal. You don't see a huge credit because it's only on the change in assessment for property taxes. So it's kind of small potatoes when you actually look at it, so.
Has the city had a public hearing on this?
Yes.
Well, I'm just curious, have you got any feedback or input from the citizens? What are they saying?
Nobody spoke at the public hearing.
And you haven't heard anybody from anyone since then?
How did you define the boundaries of the map?
It's contiguous with the university in downtown. So we saw a good area of growth. I think that's an area to keep our eye on, you know. The mayor has his eyes on seeing growth and development in that area. It's specifically targeted in the Route thirteen corridor study. It's broken into two separate areas, the connections and hospital area. So I think that was really just kind of the best place we could have looked at to put this zone.
So there wasn't, in light of, similar to what Councilman Dobbs is asking, it really wasn't proposed to the public as far as an open forum as to, you know, we're getting ready to prepare a rise zone, where would you like this? What do you think the most beneficial areas might be? I was surprised that it didn't go further, I was surprised it didn't go further east.
East to the...
I would have thought that, it looks to me like it doesn't cover both sides of Eastern Shore Drive.
It has to be contiguous to the university, it has to connect to the university.
None of this looks really contiguous to the university.
It does, but right up to it. On the north side, so you'll, the TETC is the, just outside the nor, southern border of it?
Well, you're east and west zones. They're not going to be contiguous to the university. Again, I just was surprised that it didn't go further over to the Eastern Shore Drive. Because that's a lot of business potential on Eastern Shore Drive.
Yeah, but again, that focus was on Route thirteen and some of the beautification efforts that the city's working on for that, so.
Well, it goes to the western side of thirteen.
There's very few properties, I mean, to me, there's very few vacant...
The focus was thirteen itself, so it wouldn't have included Eastern Shore Drive along the corridor.
So limited number of vacant properties just in that one corridor. I think you have much more potential on Eastern Shore Drive, especially on the, on the west side of Eastern Shore Drive for some expansion.
I'd like to see that area developed.
The Eastern Shore Drive area?
There's a lot of potential, at least have the parade route there.
Anyway, just personal opinion.
Yeah, okay, I'll take that.
Wasn't sure how it was developed.
I'm pretty naive, and from what I understand, this program's a five-year program, and then the taxes are repaid. If I sell my property in four and a half years and somebody comes in with the same proposal and wants to be involved in this program, what diligence, what incentive is there? Is motivation to collect these private, these previous four and a half years of taxes? Or is there any? Is there any oversight?
The property taxes? Well, the property taxes are given to the property tax owner, and it's on a year basis.
I understand. And after a certain period of time, they're paid back incrementally, correct?
It's only on the change in assessment.
And the question is, he does a diligence to see that they are collected.
It's phased in, so there's...
Maybe, there is a lot of people that are over, looking at this oversight and saying, okay, we don't want to forget this.
Yeah, I think it's very similar to the enterprise zone now, Mr. Hall.
Does it work?
And I don't think you're that naive, by the way, but... Well, it's worked for, since nineteen eighty-two with the enterprise zone, sir.
Then you can tell me if there are thousands that we've collected on it.
Well, I'll yield to the finance office. But no, I mean, after the credit runs out, then it goes to full taxation, and you have to pay your taxes, right? So the tax bill is a discounted rate. If you don't pay that, then you've got other issues to deal with that too.
I understand.
Sir.
Can I add one thing to Mr. Kilmer's question? On the state regulations, the application that's going to be turned in by the city and SU, it has to designate certain industry groups that they're focusing on. And I think, although again, I'm not certain, because, you know, you're talking with Maryland State gobbledygook, I think that means that within those industry groups, you can get the benefits. So for example, if it were to be scientific research and development, that sort of thing, and the hospital sold the vacant lot they own, where the Daily Times used to be, to build another Dollar General, that would probably, I think, not qualify for it if they didn't have grocery and fast food stores as one of the targeted industries.
Right, there are mission identified in the rise zone that they have to do.
There's some, I think there's some ability to direct it towards certain things.
I'm pretty sure Burger King wouldn't qualify for the rise zone unless they really wanted to stretch their business mission.
Tell the students that.
It's true and fair.
Any other ques, thank you, Bobby, any other questions? Okay, anything else you need from the county as a whole?
Well, next steps would be, we would have to have a public hearing in front of county council. We need two weeks to advertise that. So if it's okay with council, I'd propose a May fifteenth public hearing to give us time for, I think... fifteenth public hearing to give us time for, I think you guys have your next meeting on May fifteenth, correct?
Yes.
We have one May first or something.
Yeah, I would have had to advertise today, so I just wanted to see how this would go, and then...
Is there a consensus for the council to do this?
This, is, are we okay with this? John?
No, pardon?
Matt?
Yeah.
Arnie? Joe? You said yes.
I've, I've got to digest this more, but I, I can go along with the council.
I guess there's no public hearing, I'm not, I'm not committing to vote yes yet.
You have a majority. Not a warmer session, but a majority.
All right, and then in the meantime, if you guys have any questions you'd like to answer, please feel free to contact us.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Cannon, before they leave, would it be helpful to have the application, so you'd see exactly what's being applied for?
Fine, if you could, want to send a copy of that, Mr. Hall?
I can do that.
And maybe some guidelines?
Oh, I, I can also study guidelines.
I know you held a meeting about a few weeks back, right?
For, with the city council?
Yeah. Well, not with the city council, is it?
No, we have one with county executive.
Yeah.
And Western and Wade.
Yeah. All right, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the proposed water and sewer plan amendment. Dallas?
Dallas, you mind shutting the laptop?
Sure. Thank you. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Just letting you know. Yep, Dallas Baker, Director of Public Works for the county.
Thank you.
We've received a request for a water and sewer plan amendment from the Aldi's grocery store. We have representatives here if there's any specific questions, but this is the property up in the corner of thirteen and Daggsboro Road. It's the northeast corner where the old Chevron Station used to be. The property's been annexed into the city, they're currently at the W six S six designation, which means no water or sewer service planned, and they were going to build a grocery store or planning on putting water and sewer there, so they'd like to change that designation. You have the pack in front of you, it's pretty straightforward, it's okay here, then we'll move to legislative session and public hearing, and then it gets forwarded up to the Maryland Department of Planning and the Maryland Department of Environment. They've recently revised their process so that before these packages come before the council, they go up to the state for preliminary review, and that way any questions that they have on the state level get addressed before it comes here and then get sent up. So MDE and MDP have both already reviewed this, their comments have been addressed. So if you guys are good with it, then we will...
So it comes back here, do we have to address it, and then it goes back to them again? Do we have concerns?
No, it, it's already gone to them.
Right.
So they've gotten their, they're, they're good with the package.
And then they send it here?
And then, then it comes to you.
And if we don't like it, then we send it back to them?
No, if we don't like it, we get whatever comments we want addressed, and then send it back to them.
Okay.
So...
We're good, they're good, yeah.
Yeah, it, it was, it, it ended up being, I, I guess they were getting packages that were approved on the local level that they took issues with, and then they were getting bounced back, so they were just trying to get a preliminary review in to avoid the back and forth. They've received a lot of pressure from the gov, not pressure, directive from the governor's office to speed the process up. I think they originally had a timeframe of ninety days, and I believe that was shortened to getting a forty-five day approval, and in order to meet that, they wanted to get a look at it before the formal submittal. You have a question?
No, just to be a kind of, shouldn't all this bit have been done before construction started, or?
The, um...
I mean, I was by there yesterday, they're excavating, pipes going in the ground, everything seems, I mean, it's kind of like, they, they assumed this was going to happen anyway. It probably will, but I'm just wondering what, you know, how does that...
You know, it's, it's...
...fall into the timeline of starting the construction and all with, without it being approved.
Yeah, I, I would equate this to where you can go and get a, a grading permit prior to getting a building permit, so you can go out and you can throw up your silt fence, you can start your clearing, your grubbing, your basic site work before you actually even get your building permit. But, yeah, it's, it's, it's how the, the permit process is set up, the revising that's kind of beyond the scope of what we're looking at here.
Makes you wonder why they'd go to all that expense before it's ever approved, you know?
Yeah, I guess I can tag on to what Councilman Holloway was saying. I'm just looking at the application, and the applicant signed it on December twelfth, two thousand seventeen, and then it says authorized government official, somebody from the city signed it in March twenty-second. Why does it take so long to get to us?
Well, again, it had to go to the Maryland Department of the Environment for their approval. The, the, the package went to them, we got there, okay, it came back, and then when I looked, when, during my review of it, I noticed that we hadn't gotten the city to actually formally sign the application yet, and I asked the city to sign that. So it went to the state before the city had signed it.
Right, I, I understand that part, but since it was going there, it was already signed, and it was coming to us, why couldn't we get it ahead of time so we'd have more time to digest it and think about it?
You, you got all the time in the world to digest it.
Now, but it would have been, sooner the better, we would have got it back then, that's all I'm saying.
So you would like the future ones at the same time that the state gets their draft?
Well, Councilman Holloway said they've already dug the ground, be nice to know what's going on.
I mean, I, I don't have control over when they're, when, you know, that's been annexed into the city, I mean, I don't have control over what the city allows them to do on property that's been annexed into it.
I understand that, but I'm just saying the application was signed and the county had possession of the...
How could they do an annexation before we've amended the water and sewer plan?
You can, you can annex a property into the city, my understanding, you can annex a property into the city without having to do a, a, a water and sewer plan amendment. If, if I, if I'm a property owner, I can petition for annexation and then leave it a blank field, it could be W six S six. I don't have to have water and sewer service serving a property to, as a requirement of annexation.
If this property is annexed into the city, why are we getting involved in it?
Because the county controls the water and sewer plan. The, the water and sewer plan is part of the county's comprehensive plan, we, we have control over that. And in order to change that designation from W six S six, which is no planned water and sewer service, they have to come to the county to get that designation changed, saying, yes, we're, we're going to change our comprehensive plan, and the subset of that plan, which is the water and sewer plan, to say, yes, we're, that, that property is going to be serviced with water and sewer.
It's merely a formality to change the water and sewer plan, but what I really don't understand is if it is a process, a government, you know, a governmental process that we abide by, how can, to go back to what Councilman Holloway said, how can they possibly be putting shovels in the ground when the water and sewer plan has, amendment hasn't been approved by the council? I, I don't believe, I don't see how they can go ahead and just begin that process, or, who authorizes that?
They, they can go in, start shoveling dirt, they can build that...
They have to have the authorization to do that.
From the city.
But in the...
From the city. Now, now here's the caveat, they can go in, build that store, have it turnkey-ready, and can't have water and sewer service until the county's changed over their water and sewer plan.
They can put the pipes in the ground.
Yeah, they can put the pipes in the ground. I, I, I can go build whatever I, I, I can go build a rocket, but they're not going to let me launch it unless I get approval from NASA. You know, there, there's, there's approval processes that hold that back, so, you know, it's, again, the, the properties in the city, the city controls what they're allowed to do. The city was willing to grant them a, a permit to go in and start grading and, and, and building the site prior to getting the water and sewer plan amendment approved. We don't have control over what, what, what they're allowed to do on that.
Should we, should we send a letter to the city saying, just as a matter of policy, saying from now on, I would not recommend issuing a building permit to an annexed property until you, you are, have confirmed that the water and sewer plan has been amended where necessary?
That, that, that's certainly a possibility. I mean, we can, we can ask the city to do that. It's, it's been historically, it's, it's my understanding, it's run concurrently.
Wouldn't that be more red tape, I mean, you know, drawing out the process here for them to get their, to get their building up? I mean, are we trying to stand in the way?
No, this could have come to us two, three months ago, as Councilman Dodd said, back in December, they could have brought it to us, could have been done concurrently.
Yeah, it, it, it's interesting with, with that process, because MDE has specifically said they want to take a look at it first, so we could potentially introduce this at the same ti, a draft in, in, in a work session like we're seeing now, at the same time that MDE is seeing it. The, the caveat's going to be, if MDE wants changes revised to it, and we say, okay, we're good with it on our work session, and then MDE comes back and says, okay, we want revisions, then there would be, I would think, another work session to go over the revisions that MDE has dictated to us. So it, it's, they're, they're trying to get multiple reviews done at the same time, it's, it's, it's an iterative process.
See, I get, you know, I, I'm, I'm familiar with this property, and it's right on the side of that lake, and I guess MDE's probably going to look at it as fairly fragile property, but I guess what bothers me is just the assumption that everything will be done, and, and there's no need to hold it up, but, you know, you ride by and you look at it and you see, see the activity going on and, you know, progress being made, and then it comes, comes to us to be, to be approved, and it kind of looks like we're putting the cart before the horse here.
We get the bad guys, we turn it down.
You know, and so, perhaps if we said no, you know, I mean, and, and that won't say any reason to, but what, what I'm saying is, is, is like, there's, there's assumption that, yeah, it's just going to be approved anyway.
I, I understand.
And, and it's not a, a power player or anything like that, it's our responsibility, and that's why it's in, as it is in statute code or whatever it may be, Mr. Taylor, but it's there because they expect us to protect the citizens of Ligonico County by following the procedure. Now, is this a situation where the city moved too quickly, or is this one where the county neglected to propose the amendment to the water and sewer plan earlier?
Again, historically, we have done these concurrently, so I don't believe that there's really been any, any change in whether the county started, or whether the city started jumping the gun by letting them build things, or wa, or if the county didn't get the, the paperwork in done. We, we got the paperwork in, we forwarded it to MDE for their, their draft review. That was the, I would say, was the big change in this process. Previous projects didn't go to MDE for review, so that's why we're seeing this extra timeframe, and I think probably on Aldi's side, in the hopes of trying to move forward with, with, when they have a targeted opening, they, they maybe assumption of, okay, we're, we're going to start, you know, start doing work, we can get a build, you know, I say we, I'm putting on, pretend head of Aldi, and we, we can get our building permit, get this all going, because historically, the county hasn't had issues with, with, with changing these amendments, because it's, 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 you know, the city's got the, the water and sewer capacity to serve the, the property. This is really just changing numbers on a, on a planning map.
You're a hundred percent correct, but the process is going to be there, we might as well follow.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and, and we, we can certainly, you know, I, I would imagine, send something to the city to say, hey, look, guys, please don't issue any grading permits or any type of permitting for this until you've gotten formal approval back from the council for the water and sewer plan, but again, as we spoke about, it's going to add a, another level of bureaucracy.
Well, the, the level of bureaucracy is already there, I think we just need to be careful in how we deal with it, and it isn't going to extend the process that long, trust me. You could have brought this to us two months ago, it would have been, been approved in two weeks.
We, we, no, we kind of approved it until we got MDE's approval back.
Right, but I mean, anytime you come, we're not going to, anything that we do is not going to prolong it that much.
Yeah, well, well, Sharp Town came to us how many months ago?
Mm-hmm.
With the water and sewer plan. They are still going through the process of getting that approved at MDE, and it's been, that's been six months, seven months? I mean, it, it's been a while, so the idea that, oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, I think it would be a, a pretty big delay if we didn't let them run concurrently. I mean, because Sharp Town tried to get ahead of the process, you know, that, that wasn't land that was being, I mean, there's nothing that's going to happen there anytime soon, you know, so they, they were trying to get ahead of time, you know, this is their plan and things like that, and it shouldn't have been an issue, but they still haven't gotten final approval, even after we signed, you know, we had our work session on that from MDE, so I think there's, there can be a lot of delay at, not at our level, at the state level, and if we don't allow it to run concurrently, they'll say, oh, you know, don't wait, you know, you can't do anything until we do something, yeah, we're going to hold up a lot of work in these, you know, kind of more outline, things like that, so...
Our process isn't holding up anything, I mean, we can, we can...
But we're dependent upon what the state does.
I can't speak for MDE, well, as a county, we aren't, we're moving forward right now with this, this is on the table right now, and MDE still hasn't, hasn't responded, am I correct?
No, no, MDE has responded, the, the, MDE has looked over this and given their blessing, so if we took this and sent it to MDE, it's almost a rubber stamp approval for it.
Oh, and you said we have to send it to MDE, I thought you said there was another process in, that they have to go through.
No, so they have looked at the draft report, they are good with it, they've had their comments addressed, we then now send this back to them with, with our approval, and then they just can rubber stamp it, because what, what the issue they were experiencing was, is there's, they, initially, they had ninety days to review all of these applications, and they were coming up before the, before the state and, and the environment and, and planning, and the governor said, look, you guys are taking too long, you're holding up business, we want to be business-friendly on the state level, let's speed this up, let's drop this from a ninety-day review process to a forty-five-day process, so these businesses can get up and running faster. In order to compensate for that with a lack of staff that they had at the state level, they said, counties, please send us these ahead of time before you've reviewed them and approved them on the local level, so that if we have comments, we can get those addressed before they're formally introduced to us, because once they get the formal approval, their, their clock starts ticking. They've got forty-five days to get that out the door, or that they get in trouble, so that, this was their, their mechanism to that. I mean, the, the, the reality is, we could potentially still just keep doing things the way we are, we could take them, review these reports, approve them, and then send them to MDE without approval, I don't know what that backlash would be, because when the state's coming to us and say, look, we're revising our processes, they might just outright reject the applications and say, you didn't follow what we told you to do, sorry, go back to the drawing board.
Well, what, what I suggest is, is what you mentioned, maybe, once we get the idea that these amendments might be coming, maybe you should email them to us, all the council members, and say, this is, this might be happening, if you want a work session on this, let me know. I don't think we need, so I need to have a work session.
That's what I was suggesting.
Or you, somebody said, it's doubtless you, so, yeah, I mean, let, let us know ahead of time, so we have some idea about it, but we shouldn't be saying, oh, you have to stop, you can't do any work until we're done, we should, they need to run concurrently, or we're going to hold up some work here, which...
I, I wasn't suggesting no, I was just suggesting, I was saying that this is how the pro, keep in mind, this is how the process should be, because...
But the process can run concurrently.
You would hate to be, you would hate for there to be some type of ramifications at the council.
No, I mean, I think people should understand that we always retain the power to say no, and that's a risk they run, but run it concurrently and, and keep us informed better at the beginning of the process, so that if there are objections, you have a work session and, and stop that ahead of time.
So what we can do, maybe, I'm, I'm just thinking out loud here, is when we get the next application, and when I, when I send it up to MDE for their review, I can forward that to the council also for your review, and with the question, do you want a work session now, or do you want to wait until after MDE has had a chance to review this with their comments? Does that...
Sounds to me like the city's moving forward even without MDE's response, I mean, is that not correct?
Yeah, a, a, again, they've, they've issued a, I would assume it's just basically a grading permit to, to start work out on that site, and it's, you know, the, the, the business owners, well, you know...
Take the risk.
Yeah, take, take the risk of, of start pushing some dirt and getting their rough grading and their silt fences and stuff. I mean, one of the first things they've got to do is they've got to build their stormwater ponds and their sediment erosion control before they can even start working on the buildings, so that can be going on while they were getting this approval, you know, it's...
Yeah, it sounds like they've moved, moved well ahead of it with both the county and, and the state.
And, and, and realistically, to be fair too, they might not have been aware that MDE was changing their, their plans. This is the first plan that we've had come through that's gone through the process of going to MDE as on a draft review first.
Right. We're leaving your hands. I mean, again, I, I always looked at it as a formality. It's worthy of consideration, but it is, in the same sense, I think it's a formality on our...
And I said, absolutely, I can send you the draft copies when they go up to MDE and, and just, you know, if you guys want a work session on it, great, if not, we'll just...
Are these the applicants?
Yeah, I believe it's, uh, Bowler Engineering.
I, I just want to introduce them so we can say hello. I don't want you all to think that we are against this project, we're certainly not.
My name is Sherri Hoestedler, I'm with Bowler Engineering. We're the engineering consultant for Pentex Ventures, which is the developer.
And I am the developer.
Good to have you here.
Ed Baker, no relation.
As Larry says, uh, we're, we're a pro-business, um, group. And we're just, we were just concerned about the form, you know, the formal processes of how it was done. And, um, you know, no reflection on anybody whatsoever. We were just kind of curious as to how something, as Councilman Holloway said, something comes to our table for approval, and it seems that the project is well out of the gate before we've even made that approval. Doesn't seem like the best way to go, but, um, I guess you understand what risks you take when you get into it. And you also try to deal with as many delays as you can. You would be the first project manager or developer to continue a project before they had complete approval from the state of Maryland. I think half of, uh, Lighthouse Sound was built before they had the approval from the state of Maryland. But anyway, uh, any comments you'd like to make, we're open, the floor's open for you.
No, I'm good.
Yeah, okay.
Just here for any questions, answer anything that you have.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you very much, good luck with everything.
Thank you. We, uh, we've really appreciated the, the opportunity to work here and with good fortune, we'll do some more things with you.
Great.
And continue to invest monies in this community and this county.
We did a lot of hard work to get people like you in our county, trust me.
Thank you.
So we appreciate it.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you for understanding and thank you for being here.
Any other questions, uh, for Mr. Baker, for the Dallas Baker? Okay, um, where do we go from here?
It requires a public hearing, as Dallas mentioned, so we can have that on May the fifteenth.
All right, sounds good. Any other, anything else? All right, Mr. Baker, thank you very much, thank you very much. Take care.
Thank you.
Mr. President, we need, um, like, two to three minutes, we're packed fourteen to change over the tape.
Okay, um, the House Bill sixteen was the only other item on the agenda.
That is to discuss, um, perhaps sending a letter of support, um, to the governor for that particular bill.
Okay, um... I think we can figure this out in like two minutes, can't we? Uh, but there is, is, there's nothing in the brief book on this?
Um, a copy of the bill should be in the brief book.
I need to see it.
Yeah, it's on page two twenty-five of the PDF.
Why don't you swap it out? Why don't we go ahead and take a recess and we'll come back a little bit early, like ten minutes early before, before education, get this done. You're good. entertain a motion to, uh, recess? All right.